I call the January 23, 2024, special meeting of the Town Council to order. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and truly public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
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 No recognition.
No recognition tonight? Do we have a motion for the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes from the January 2, 2024 meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. Under the chairman's report, we have a letter of resignation from Loretta Lambert as a member of the Commission on Aging dated December 29, 2023. The only other thing I would like to add is a thank you to our Public Works Department for the great job they're doing and all the various storms and weather incidents we've had lately. We appreciate their efforts. Let's move on to subcommittees. Finance?
Am I allowed to skip to elderly tax relief?
No.
No? Then under finance, nothing.
Okay. Ordinance?
Ordinance, we met today and we referred the proposed ordinance relating to elderly tax relief to the Town Council for discussion and approval.
Okay. Public Works?
Yes, under Public Works, we met last week and discussed ongoing projects within the community. And also Jerry Lucowski put out a booklet for us, which I believe the Town Manager will be discussing.
Elderly tax relief?
We met today and we voted to send the ordinance to the ordinance subcommittee, which subsequently sent it to the Town Council.
You didn't want to say anything about what it did, changes?
What we did was make the town tax rebate the same as the state, all the same requirements. The total costs of both the state and the town programs are, would come to roughly $300 and change, $310,000, $320,000 in total. In the past, I believe it was around $250 between the two programs, so it's bumping up a little.
Town Manager's report.
Good evening, Honorable Chairwoman and members of the Town Council. I just wanted to give you a few updates. Department heads have finalized the budget submission for the '24-'25 fiscal year, and we have successfully concluded the initial review meetings for the departments. The second round interviews will be conducted in early February. We have requested an extension for the '23-'24 audit, extending it through February 29. This extension is necessary to ensure the proper balancing of additional projects currently being managed by the Finance Department, and that is the implementation of our softwares that we have discussed, ClearGov, and our time in attendance. In your package, we have included a capital improvement program booklet, which was created by our engineering department headed by Jerry Lucowski. I'd like to express my gratitude to Jerry Lucowski and his team for creating a dynamic document that serves as a foundation for our future initiatives. Moving forward, we will continue to update and incorporate additional capital projects, including those related to the water and sewer, police department, and community center, which will give us the ability to be updated and will have a resource to actually understand where we're moving as an organization in a town. I'd like to make an announcement of a new park and recreation director. I'm delighted to introduce our newest team member, Mr. Michael Gannon, who will assume the role of Watertown's Park and Recreation Director, starting on Monday, January 29, 2024. Mr. Gannon brings a wealth of experience, having served as the Director of Park and Recreation in Southbury and Plymouth. In addition to his municipal roles, he boasts a strong background in the private sector as a business owner and has a commendable history of community involvement through volunteerism. His resume was very long, so I didn't want to start listing it, and I'm sure that he'll naturally socialize himself as we move along. Mr. Gannon emerged as the selected candidate through a rigorous selection process, which involved reviewing resumes and applications from 17 applicants. The process included a panel interview and concluded with a final interview with the Town Manager. I would like to extend my gratitude to the members of the panel who conducted the initial round of interviews. Special thanks to council members Robert Herm Dacina, Karina Noid, Park and Recreation Commissioner Joseph McGraw, and Ray LaGasse, our Director of Human Resources, for their valuable contributions in the selection process. Thank you. I'd like to invite Mr. Gannon up to the front. Mr. Gannon, if you'd like to address the council, please.
Quickly, good evening. Nice to see many of you again. I want to thank you all for your service. I know serving as an elected official can be challenging at times. I want to thank Mr. Ramo for his confidence in me to serve the town of Watertown as its next director of Parks, Recreation, Senior, and Social Services. I also want to acknowledge all of whom have, for years, contributed towards my professional growth and have supported me through my journey to Watertown. High-quality parks, recreation, senior, and social services play an important role in each of our quality of lives. In Watertown, we will strive to avail ourselves to each and every household in one way or another, at one time or another, to visit us. I look forward to working with Mr. Ramo and Team Watertown, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Commission on Aging, the Town Council, public service groups, and many others. So, thank you again for the opportunity. Thank you.
On to new business. Item A.
I move to nominate Heather Hayes, 103 Cutler Street, Watertown, to reappoint a constable for a term to expire January 31, 2026.
The only info I have on Heather is that she is a former chairman of the Democratic Town Committee and is a long-term resident of Watertown. Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I move to nominate Joseph Romano, 11 Howland Street, Oakville, to an appointment as constable. The appointment is to fill a vacancy created by an expired term of Louis Esposito to expire January 31, 2026.
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Romano is a business owner, which I believe everybody in town knows, as well as being very active in the sports community. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item B.
I move to set a public hearing on January 5, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. in the Watertown Town Council chambers to hear comments on a proposed modification of an ordinance concerning property tax relief to certain elderly homeowners.
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. We need to correct that. January 5 is going.
Is it February 5?
True.
So, when's our next meeting?
Is it February 5?
February 5.
Okay. We'll change that date to February 5, 2024, at 6:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item C.
I move to authorize resolution regarding the roof replacement project at the Watertown High School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item D.
I move to authorize a resolution regarding the roof replacement project at John Trumbull Primary School.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item E.
I move to modify a resolution passed on March 6, 2023, appointing the members of the school capital project committee to reflect the modification of the voting member to replace the vice chair of the Watertown Town Council with designated chairman of the Watertown Town Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
I was appointed when I was vice chair. I've continued to remain on the committee, but we want to correct the language so that it properly reads, "The chairman is attending the meetings," not "The vice chairman." So, this is really a housekeeping motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. Item F. Mr. Dacina?
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund to the police overtime account in the amount of $5,556.84. Funds received for Watertown's Police Department's participation in the statewide violent crime task force from the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item G.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $1,175.00 to tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 10.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously.
I move to enter into an executive session for the purposes of pending litigation regarding tax appeal with Seaman Realty Company versus the town of Watertown and regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the Watertown Board of Education and the Watertown Education Association. Possible members present will be the Town Council, Town Manager, Town Attorney, and Dr. Villanueva.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go into executive session.
Town council meeting.
Under eleven.
Under eleven.
Ready? I move to authorize the settlement of the tax appeal by Seaman Realty Company, and any credits due to the Seaman Company will be in the form of credits on future tax bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion in progress.
Is there anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Add. Add to the agenda.
I move to add to the agenda, consider the collective bargaining agreement between the Watertown Board of Education and the Watertown Education Association.
Is there a second to add it to the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Now read motion.
I move that the town council vote to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Watertown Board of Education and the Watertown Education Association.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? Comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And I believe we are at public participation. Anyone that would like to speak to us?
Kathryn Camera, thirty-one Cottage Place. Have a question about the audit, how we pay the auditors. Do we pay for the audit as a one-time fee? Are they paid hourly? What happens when we go into these extensions? Are we paying extra money every month for this extension?
Since I don't pay that, I don't know the answer, but I'll get it. I'll see that you get the answer.
Okay, which brings me, I guess, to the next question. So I'm trying to get used to this new procedure with freedom of information. And one of the things is, the last time I was here, I had a question. And so then I emailed it to your email address and the finance directors. And then I got, it's like a response that was kind of through the FOI. So I'm not used to that. So, because it's not an FOI, I'm not asking for documents. So I'm not sure, then, do you want questions to then go through that FOI process?
Just ask me whatever your question is.
Through your email?
Yeah.
Okay. And just on that FOI procedure, it's, it doesn't, it didn't do this every time, just pointing this out. You're asked what your request is, and then it asks you if you have any comments. And then you get an email that confirms, and now it has a phone, excuse me, like a control number. And, but what I got one time when I made the comments is I only saw what the comments were. So it's like I didn't, I don't have anything that shows what my actual request was. But that was only one time. So I understand there's some glitches, but just letting you know, that's one of the glitches, is that it's not giving you back what you sent in. So.
Well, depending on what the issue is, or the matter at hand that you're requiring about, it may end up being a freedom of information response. If it's a simple question that I can answer, or get an answer for you, then you'll get a simple email response.
Right. This was like, this is a separate issue. What I'm saying is, when you make a freedom of information request, it asks what the request is, and then it asks for any comments.
I understand what you're saying.
Well, that's not how you answered. So when you, when you get your receipt back, it's showing you your comments, it's not showing you what your request was. So that, that's kind of outside of my writing to you. That's a glitch with the, this new system. Another question I have is, what, what happens when council members respond to things on Facebook? When it's about something to do with the town? What I'm trying to understand is, are we to then assume that this is a council's answer or comment that's, the council is saying this? We're getting laughing faces and things like that? Is that what the council? I mean, it's not like when you ask, you know, there's a lost dog or something, and people are commenting on that. People are, people are talking about issues with the town, and then members of the council are either responding with answers, which I'm kind of surprised, because it's outside of the meeting, or, you know, we're getting laughy faces and things like that, which makes it feel like, you know, the council's mocking us. So I'm just curious, is, is there any, do you have any bylaws or anything about being on Facebook and answering town questions, or town issues, or making town comments? Because what, what are we, the public, supposed to think? Are we supposed to think that that's what the council feels? Or that's the council's?
No one has a right to speak for the council unless they're authorized to do so. Certainly any individual, if they have some information that will help the public and answer a question. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. But I don't know what specific issue you're talking about.
Well, when we find one, I guess, if there are one, I'll ask you, because it seems like, you know, it should be done here, not on Facebook. And I would also just like to ask if you might be able to help facilitate through Land Use. People are getting applications, land use applications, and putting up the signs, and then they never take them down. They're around Sealy, and they, the weather comes, the bad weather comes, they get blown away. Those, those are the applicants. And I've mentioned this at meetings, I've actually emailed and said, who owns, whose signs are they? You know, can you take them down? But now I'm finding out, they belong to the applicants. I don't know if there's something we can do to say, the applicants, look, when your application is over, could you please remove your signs? So if you could maybe chat with Land Use about following up with their applicants to get rid of their signs, it would be nice.
We'll bring it to their attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, poll participation is closed. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.